Mark, procedurally and with the pleasure of the council, I would like to move another item up to before public hearings, and that is item 10E regarding Recology. I see a lot of people here. Is it D?
Yeah.
Anyway, my fault. D, because I see a lot of people here that I know wake up very early. So why don't we just do that? That is adopted resolution amending franchise agreement with Recology San Bruno related to option to extend term for five-year period.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the current franchise agreement with Recology San Bruno became effective in 1998. And as you well know, Recology collects, processes, transfers, and disposes of solid waste, recyclable materials, and organics here in the city of San Bruno. The franchise agreement, as I indicated, was adopted in 1998, was approved in 1998, and it has been amended eight times during that time related to AB 939 fees, the allocation, financial allocation of debris box service costs, landfill location. In one instance, there was an amendment related to an option to extend the term of the agreement, and that was actually exercising two of the options that are provided within the agreement. So those options extended the agreement for 10 years. As indicated, the firm has sent the city a letter dated August 4th confirming their interest in exercising the third of those five-year franchise extension options that are provided for in the agreement, which would extend the franchise term through June of 2024. So the item and the resolution before you is an amendment number nine, if the city council would approve, which reterms the agreement to run through June of 2024 and makes note under section 3.5 that the contractor would have no additional option to extend the agreement. So the options would be fully exercised, and section 3.5 would, in essence, be eliminated. So that is the item before you. The city manager has a couple of comments to make, and there are representatives of Recology here that would then be available to address this matter.
So as a staff report, the written staff report indicates this matter was previously reviewed by the city council's ad hoc subcommittee. That subcommittee met with staff and heard from Recology as well to understand exactly the thought process behind the current request for extension as outlined in the franchise agreement. And the subcommittee did not reach a consensus recommendation to the city council. There was, the two subcommittee members had two different opinions. One of the discussion items that was considered at that subcommittee meeting was the possibility of rebidding the contract and/or entering into direct negotiations with Recology for a new franchise and a new franchise term. And I wanted to make a couple of comments because I've had the opportunity since that time to gather a little bit of information from experts in this field regarding the timeline, the process, and the cost for a complete reopen or rebidding of the garbage franchise. As council members are probably aware from news reports that you may have seen, this is a very time-consuming and exhaustive work process that both takes, as I said, a long time, but is also very costly. And in speaking with a consulting team that does this work on a regular basis and without prompting in any particular direction, I think the information that I received might be helpful to the city council's deliberations this evening. First of all, the persons that I talked to indicated that the process can typically take, and usually does take, between nine and 12 months. And again, that's a very rigorous process that involves the development, circulation, and vetting of proposals from firms in the industry, as well as in a fairly extensive process for developing the franchise itself, whether that be by negotiation or by direct effort simply to capture in that franchise those issues that are of interest and value to the franchising agency, in this case us. And it is recommended, and typically it is done, that in 18-month period be utilized. In other words, that any effort to rebid the franchise would begin at least 18 months in advance of the expiration of the existing franchise term, both to provide adequate time for that nine-to-12-month process, as I indicated, as well as to provide an adequate amount of time for the selected franchise hauler to ramp up and to be ready immediately when the franchise term expires. As the city council is aware, our franchise currently expires absent an extension, as is under discussion this evening, now on June 30th of 2019. So we are, and our franchise terms provide for consideration of the extension at this time precisely in consideration of the timeframes that I allowed, that I identified that are the industry standard for that kind of work. On the cost side, I asked the firm, what is your typical cost? And what is the typical total cost to an agency that wishes to rebid a franchise and to undertake that work effort? And the answer that I received is that the costs are typically divided between the consultant, who assists with the front end of the process, the development of the request for proposals or the bid documents, if you will, and works with the municipality to advertise and review the responses. And those costs are roughly half of the total amount, at between $100 and 1/4 and $150,000. You double that amount when you add to it the legal costs, which typically run about generally the same amount. So we end up with a range of total costs between $250,000, $350,000. And it's not uncommon for those costs, depending on the process, to be as much as $400,000 or more. And I did not solicit this comment, but was surprised to hear that, in fact, in this consultant's experience, that it is not uncommon, and more the case than not, that rates increase as a result of the bidding process. And it is not uncommon, and we've seen two recent examples in our little area here in the not-too-distant past, where the city goes through the procedure, spends the time, pays the money for the work. And while the process has comprehensively vetted proposals, ends up with the same hauler. That has happened twice recently in our county, the most recent time being as recently as earlier this month. So that is just simply information for the city council's consideration because we would like, of course, for the city council to provide any direction relevant to whichever path you would wish to proceed, because time could be of the essence if the city council does not determine that it is in the city's interest to proceed with an extension of the franchise pursuant to the existing franchise provisions. I believe that representatives of Recology are here this evening and have a couple of comments for you to round out the report, and then we would be happy to take your questions.
Mr. Mayor, very quick to the city manager. Can you, just for the public, because they don't have the staff report, who the two members of the subcommittee are? If you can mention those, and is it possible to mention the two cities that are in the county that you just stated?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. The two members of the subcommittee are Mayor Ruane and Councilmember Marty Medina. And the two cities that I referenced are Daly City and Hefman Bay.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for staff at this time? Why don't we hear from Recology?
Honorable mayor, members of council, city staff, and the audience tonight. My name is Mario Puccinelli, and I am a vice president and general group manager for Recology. And I began my career 18 years ago, right here at my managerial career, right here in San Bruno. So it's good to be home, but I can tell you, I never had an audience such as this. So with that, as staff has accurately described, we are here tonight to address the procedural item before you, and that is to extend our contract, as outlined in our contract, with the city for an additional five years. And while we have been your contracted service provider for over 60 years, we have been partners with the community that we serve here in San Bruno. And we take pride in giving back to the communities that we serve while providing the highest levels of customer service at the most competitive rates. And so now I'd like to have Kirsten Pinocchio, our general manager of Recology San Bruno, come up and say a few words as well. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for allowing us to take a moment and speak with you tonight. I want to commend, we have a lot of people here on our behalf, and we have a lot of our drivers right here in the audience tonight as well. And I want to thank them for taking the time out. They were up very early this morning. Mario mentioned the word partnership, and this is exemplified by our work with the city on the abandoned waste program. For the past year and a half, we partnered with the city to collect abandoned waste and illegally dumped material. We began to see trends in this behavior, and what we found through our communication with residents and our drivers is that there is a direct correlation between abandoned waste or large bulky items like sofas and mattresses being left unattended and the transient nature of move-in and move-outs from our mid-size multifamily dwellings that our franchise agreement currently does not contemplate. So to get to the root of the issue, Recology would like to expand that and allow for mid-size apartments to be allowed to have bulky item pickups with no additional charge, or provide our customers with reuse options to increase our diversion efforts even farther. We would like to create outreach materials, as well as to inform those mid-size apartments of this expanded program. Together, we're hoping to continue to reduce the amount of illegal dumping and to beautify our wonderful city. We also wanted to make mention of the tremendous success we've had partnering with our commercial businesses in San Bruno. A few of them are actually here tonight. We are proud to report that the city of San Bruno is 100% compliant in regards to AB 341, and tremendous improvements continue with our AB 1826, which is the organics ordinance. And we look forward to continuing our outreach and education and to exceed the expectations of CalRecycle. Again, we thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to our continued partnership with the city of San Bruno.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or Recology at this time? Anyone from the public like to talk to us?
Hello, I'm Steve from Mastick Avenue. And I really like what Kirsten's talking about in terms of the apartment mid-size and large garbage pickups. I think that's great. I think that's going to do a lot for the neighborhoods where we do see the dumping. But I'd like to also ask if maybe in some of the neighborhoods, particularly the one I live in and others near me, there is dumping that happens that's not right outside to these apartments where there's this transient nature. And maybe we could also work that in. So like if there's a driver who's, I'll give an example, who's driving down Huntington and then coming up San Felipe. There's an area right there on the corner that often there seems to be stuff that just gets laid or gets left, and it's actually, it's right near the, well, there are other areas too on the east side, and I'm sure up in the Rollingwood area and stuff like that. Maybe if we had a habit where we drove by and we picked up some of that stuff that's coming not from these transient nature apartments, it might help to beautify and make our city better. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what you're doing.
Hi, my name is Val Morgan. Good evening, mayor and city members, council members and all here. I would like to support reentering the contract with Recology San Bruno. They've been very supportive through our community and our conservation committee since its inception over three years ago. They have attended and spoke at many of our board meetings and committee meetings. They've kept us supplied with totes, recycled bags, compost pails, information and advice, and they and our management have contributed greatly to the success of our committee. I have one request though, and that is that ecology and any other essential services do everything in their power to keep costs down, because our committee does its utmost to conserve electricity, water, waste, everything. But no matter what we do, costs keep rising. I know it's hard to beat that, but it's a bit disheartening. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and friends and public here. My name is Dr. Regina Stamp Extroud. I am the president at Skyline College. And I'm here to support the reentering in the agreement for Recology, but I'm probably going to give you a little different slant of a reason. I have had the pleasure of being with Skyline College since 2001. That means about 16 years ago, when I joined as the vice president of instruction, I had firsthand opportunity to witness what it means to be a good corporate citizen in the city of San Bruno. You see, Mr. Puccinelli was my partner in the Leadership Institute, and so even at that point, Recology was very, very supportive of the college and the ways in which it connected with the community and developed leaders for this area. But that's not all. On the president's council for many, many years who served, Kirsten Pinocchio. And it's not just service on the president's council where we have the president's breakfast and invite 400 of our closest friends and loved ones to the breakfast in order to raise money to support the education of San Bruno residents. It's also the support of the Success Summit, which addresses issues in the north county, such as transportation and housing, those types of things. Recology has been wholeheartedly supportive of the college in doing those things. So it's not that it's necessarily just because they support the college, but because they demonstrate on a regular basis what it means to be a good corporate citizen, and their responsibility to make sure they're not just here in the area, but they are actually making a contribution to the area as well. So yes, they do the work, they meet their missions, but they also support us in terms of being a part of the city. Skyline College has a value system that is based on environmental sustainability and making sure that we subscribe to those tenets of sustainability, and our relationships and partnerships with Recology are things that help us make that real, make us realize that value and live up to our mission. So with any questions, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to elaborate more, but I just want to come in and say that we absolutely support this.
Thank you, Regina.
All right, thank you.
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I support the extension, and I just wanted to remind people that about a year ago, Recology came to us and said, if the city amends the current agreement and lets them change where they are dumping their material, that it will save us money and that they will pass that rate through, the savings through, to the residents. Instead of going, I'm going to use a number, instead of going 2% increase, they were able to go at 1 and 1/2 or something. So they passed the savings on to the city. They didn't have to do that. They could have stayed the way it was, dumped it where it was, and we would have paid more. So they're very proactive.
Thank you.
Larry Franzella, Crestmore Drive. I would just like to urge that you pass the extension. Hardly seems worth the time and effort and the financial resources for something that's working. It's one of the services that really works well in this city. I could outline a few that maybe you want to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on. So just sign it and extend it. It's my recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'd like to see how the council feels about this. Marty?
Right, so I had a difference of opinion, okay? I'll be straightforward about it. We did not receive the information on the cost that we just received tonight about, or the time that it would take to do any type of rebidding. $400,000 is a substantial amount of money. My objection to immediately agreeing to the extension is not based on the service that any of you provide. It's not based on any of the community service that you provide. I made it very clear to Kirsten and Mario in the meeting that you guys do a wonderful job. I have heard numerous complaints about how San Bruno extends contracts and how we have yearly increases that are pretty much automatic, but not once have I ever heard a complaint about the service. So I want to make that absolutely clear. I feel as an elected that it's my responsibility at every point to try to find a way to make something better for our city. In every contract that we get, in every service that we provide, I feel that I should be trying to find a way to make it better for everybody. In this contract, as we were moving forward with it, my point in the meeting, as I told Kirsten and Mario, was, what can we do to make a better deal for San Bruno? If it comes down to rebidding, that's one thing. Because a lot of people don't understand, as has been pointed out, that rebidding doesn't mean you get better service. It could mean you get a better, better price, but there's no guarantee in that. And in my first evaluation of rebidding, it would provide an opportunity for all the residents to know, this is the best price that you can get based on the bids that we receive. So at that point, I was hoping that we could look into negotiating some of those benefits. Today, I heard for the first time that this... I heard for the, thanks, I heard for the first time that you're expanding the pickup. So that's a good thing too. So at no cost? Well, that's the question. Is that, something always costs, right? Because we pay for it one way or the other. Kirsten, is that absolutely true, that that cost for the additional pickups at no point gets put into the bottom line of the additional service that we pay? Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not going to charge the city directly. We're not going to charge the customers for those pickups. It will all end up in some sort of disposal unless we can reuse those items, which is our first intention.
Right. So the other thing I was hoping that we could possibly negotiate, because at that point, I was reminded that the meeting that we were having was only to discuss the particulars of the extension, not to negotiate, correct? O'Leary, right? You stopped me when I was saying, well, maybe we should just start negotiating an extension. If, understanding how good the service is and possible the price, how can we look at getting more for the city? And what I was interested in is, I'm noticing downtown that our containers are full on the weekends, and they're not being serviced. So I don't know if this is proper now, if we can negotiate in this manner, but I would like to see the garbage picked up on the weekends. I don't know how we need to do that, if Recology is willing to help us out on that. But I'm looking for a better deal. And I think that's what we all should be looking at for. And we don't have to go out to bid to get a better deal. We could enter negotiations on this extension and possibly look into a further extension. So that's what I want to make absolutely clear to everybody that's here. My garbage gets picked up every Friday, no problem, right? I have no problem with that. I'm just looking out for a better deal at every opportunity that I can get. That was my objection to the contract extension.
Okay, Rico?
Yeah, a few things. In regards to this, obviously there's a cost. What hasn't been defined is where those monies would come from, the $250,000 to $350,000. Where are they budgeted for? The answer is no. Where would they come from? Reserves, general fund reserves. Those are monies that are usually set aside for emergencies, situations that deal with very pertinent issues that face our community. I'm not one who likes to dip in reserves. We do that because there's a critical issue at hand, that there's an emergency. What we would be doing is getting an RFP together. What I would want to see is, if that were even to happen, is that the RFP very clear that it becomes a union and it stays a union, not beyond the 90 days that's required by law. Because somebody can come in and on the 91st day, change all that. So because you do get a quality service. We do have these folks who work and live in San Bruno. And we want to certainly maintain that cost of living and that lifestyle and the ability and affordability to be here in this community. I think what should be done is if we know something's coming up, we need a budget for it. Let's plan for it accordingly, according to a timeline. The 18 months too, is because if it takes 12 months, like staff was saying, and then you want to change to somebody else, then it takes time to get them up to speed. So again, there is no guarantee. There is a hope that we can go out for an RFP, spend the $350,000 potentially, spend the staff time and resources, and we may get the same, we may get better, and we may get less. But it's a hope, and a hope is not a plan. And it's not my money to spend, $350,000. When I've been out talking to residents, I do not hear about Recology. I do not hear about the garbage company. I hear about the water and sewer rates. That is what I hear, and I can tell you firsthand, because I have been walking and talking. Met the nice lady, Ms. Zink, who's running for mayor, Monday. She says the same thing. So it's not just me hearing it, it's somebody else as well, running for the same office. They have been with us for over 60 years. This has never been San Bruno's garbage company. Yes, it was called it at a time, but it was not, quote, "San Bruno Garbage Company." There's sometimes that belief. I appreciate on the abandoned waste, to increase that at no cost. I appreciate that Recology has stepped up when we've asked for them to have garbage pickups to a lot of the areas that have been neglected and have been trashed. And they have stepped up to the plate. So for me, very clearly, to have an RFP that goes out, that ensures the union job and union wages, and we spend the resources of our staff time and those reserves, that there is no guarantee, I am not into paying the taxpayers' dollars in reserves for something that there is no guarantee. And if the city of Daly City can tell you that they went through the process, the emotion, and the potential, and they ended up staying with the same garbage company. So history, I do not want it repeated. I am in favor of extending the agreement. And it will then get rid of section 3.5, and then in 2024, we plan ahead, we budget accordingly, and we do this thing correctly. And that's what I believe should be done, and I am in favor of extending.
Thank you. Irene?
Thank you. I have a special relationship with Recology. I'm the president of the, or chairman of the Beautification Task Force Committee. I'm the president of the, or chairman of the Beautification Task Force Committee, and we put on Operation Clean Sweep. We've done it for eighteen or nineteen years now, and Recology's always been there for us. They come in, we send out, this last year, we sent out two hundred and forty-some people. They brought in tons of garbage recycling. Recology picked it up, took it away. They always provide our lunch, which is separate from the garbage. They always are there. I pick up the phone and I say, you know, how about if we do this? How about if we need to beef up our education program in the elementary schools? What, what can we do to do that? Kirsten sat down with me, I see Ms. Del Benny here, who was in Kirsten's place at one time. We would go out and engage the elementary schools and do, and do it. And we are doing it more and more, and again and again. So I appreciate the fact that people don't like paying higher rates. Nobody does. But you look around, what do the higher rates go to? They go to the salaries, they go to the health care that's always rising, they go to the gas prices that are always rising, they go to all those things. It's not money that just goes into someone's pocket. It goes out to pay all the other things that get, that have raises. So that's how life goes. I'm in favor, obviously, of extending the program. I appreciate all the work that goes into a bid process. I've seen cities go through it. It's not a pretty picture. And again, there's no guarantee. In fact, Daly City, I believe, went through the process, Recology did bid on it. Recology actually, from my understanding from a council member at Daly City, Recology actually had a better package, but for some reason, the majority of the council bid the other way, or voted the other way. So it's, just because you go through a bid process doesn't guarantee anything. So enough said, I appreciate what Recology has done. I know that they will be cooperative and good partners in the future. And I appreciate all those people who've come out and said their piece.
Thank you, Irene. The word, the word that Irene started her, her comments were, were relationship. And as I arrived to the sunset of my, you know, my term on this, on the sitting on this council, the twenty-one years that I've spent on this council has, there's been a great relationship with Recology. Seeing Mario here, Tammy, and Kirsten, seeing some of the truck drivers, Mike, and Todd, I mean, this is a relationship that has grown over the years. And to now question, you know, their, the costs, the financials and things, I just always felt that, you know, felt comfortable that we had the finances, you know, we had the experts looking over the papers, we had the contracts, we had the consultants, and everything was, was transparent on the up and up. And even then, on top of that, whenever there was a concern, whether it was Mario, whether it was Tim, whether it was Kirsten, they took care of it. There was no negotiations. They recognize it because they live here, and they see it, and they saw the importance of taking care of issues that would make the community better. So I agree with the former mayor, and this is something that we shouldn't even be, and I believe we haven't done in the previous extensions, that if anything, want to compliment Recology for what they've done over the, since 1994, 98, or whatever. And then, and hopefully, that will even improve and strengthen our relationship in the, through 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. You can probably guess how I feel about this. I was the other member on the, on the subcommittee, and I told Marty that, that evening, I said, a lot of times, the reason you go out to bid is to make sure that the people you have are honest. Well, I have no qualms about that. These people are, Recology independently audited, if you will, checks and balances every few years by a totally independent firm. So we know factually we're getting the best deal that we can get. They came to us before, a couple of years ago, and said, you know, we can save some money if we do this, if we do that. As Mr. Rico said, they didn't have to do that, but they did. They're great community members. They, they, they work with us in many different ways. And coming forward tonight, and formally saying that they're going to help us get rid of some of this street garbage, when in fact, they did that pretty much on their own with a phone call over the last numbers of months, should give you an indication of where their heart is in this community. So I have no qualms at all. I'm for the extension. So any other discussion? Is there some action by the council? Marty?
So, so like I said earlier, it has nothing to do about the quality of the service, the commitment to the community, okay? I want to make that absolutely clear. This 400,000 dollar potential cost wasn't disclosed in this meeting that we had, okay? Right? Right. So what also I think the public may not understand is, every garbage contract that's out there has these automatic rate increases based on inflation. Correct? Right? Can we, staff confirm that? I mean, it helps explain when people say, hey, they automatically get to increase the rates. Well, yeah, that's in the contract, and it's not just in Recology's contract. It's, it's a standard rate increase for all garbage haulers.
All that I am aware of all have some form of cost increase that would be effective annually.
Okay. So that's important for people to understand, that it's not that they just automatically get to say, yes, and we're going to increase the rates. It's, it's in the contract based on the operating cost, right? So I have no problem standing, or sitting here today and saying, we got something more from the meeting I attended on August 30th. I would be interested in seeing if we could get additional service from Recology to come downtown to clean that. And I would be easily swayed to say, yeah, I got a little bit more out of, out of it. We got a better deal. So, so I don't know the procedure, how I could possibly do that, or something that we could discuss at a later time. And, and I could put a, I guess, make a resolution, or I don't know if our finance director could give us, give me any input on how that could be possibly done, that we could negotiate that part of it, that part of the contract?
Could you, could you repeat the part that you specifically would like to renegotiate?
I want to see garbage picked up on the weekends downtown, because we have overflowing garbage receptacles, you know? And it'd be nice to see that someone was more capable of doing that than what's happening now.
We did discuss this at the subcommittee meeting, and we can, we can definitely have a conversation with Recology...
Okay.
...and return information to the city council about that.
Right. Rico?
Excuse me. Through the chair, my understanding is too, and I understand Mr. Medina trying to improve what we have and make things better, but to have open negotiations, it would be no different than us doing labor negotiations with city employees. I don't think this is the forum, the venue, it's not on the agenda. I believe that aspect that you're asking should go back to subcommittee, and come back to the council as a whole.
Right.
Clarifying that, the city manager just said that we could do that.
We will.
Okay.
Irene, you had a comment?
I just want to clarify what you're saying. I've been on San Mateo Avenue on the last Sunday of the month for the last three years, pretty much. I was there this last Sunday. I walked up and down. Val was there with me. There was one trash can that was slightly over the limit. I went, pushed it down, and it was done. Out of all the forty, I think there's forty-five trash cans. So that might, I don't know if that is a problem, per se. And I, and of all this time now, in, like I said, three years, maybe four or five trash cans have been over the top. So to, to negotiate to have union people come in on a weekend, and to empty trash cans, and to drive the trash, the, the truck up and down the street, when people are trying to park and drive, and, you know, they do the double parking, I just, I just don't think it's necessary. But that's my opinion.
Okay. Not to cut anybody off, but the issue tonight is the extension, and we can, we can talk further in the subcommittee about some things that you, you want going forward.
Sure.
Okay? So I think we've heard from everybody. Is there action by the council on this item?
I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Thank you very much. You can get to bed and get up early.[1786.88][1786.88](APPLAUSE). If you, if you have a minute? Thank you.
Thank you.